Now it's not. It is 6:30. We will call the October 20th, planning a zoning commission agenda to order. A roll call. Brooks?
Here.
Chuck?
Present.
Brian?
Present.
Thomas?
Here.
Melissa?
Here.
Rob?
Here.
We have a quorum. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
On the agenda? And... I'd like to see pages 20 and 21 removed. Because they're duplicates of three and four. And they're included in number six. Conditional use application minutes are included in there.
I think Melissa puts the minutes in here as just a note that it was continued. I think that's why it's in there.
Okay.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number four, I will entertain a approval of minutes of the October 6th meeting.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number five is public comments. Anybody who would like to address the commission may do so now. Unless you're on the agenda, we'll get to you. Anyone? Okay. Item number six. A conditional use application for 10112 South Sandstone Avenue. So, since I was gone at the last one. Somebody like to... Tell me what this is about. How about that? Brian?
Uh, so there was actually two...
Sorry. Just a reminder to use your microphones, so people on TV can hear you.
So, two weeks ago, there was two applications on this property. One for residential above second... Or, sorry, above business.
Okay.
Which is a conditional use requirement. And the second application was for an additional driveway. On a street. And at the last meeting, there were some things that were missing on the site plan, loading area. Rear yard setback requirements.
Okay.
There was pavement in the rear yard or rear or end or side yard setback. We suggested some potential options.
Okay.
To the applicant of how they could correct it. And then, I believe there was a recommendation to... Put it on hold until... Additional information could be provided. So, it looks like we did get that here today, so... Maybe the applicant can... Speak to it.
So, this is the item six and seven in Eagle Creek. Is that what we have? Um, is there somebody here to speak to this? No one? On Sandstone? Okay.
So, the driveway for the conditional use permit for the second driveway on the frontage. Our city engineer, if they were to relocate that driveway... From, like, the last meeting, wanted them to submit a traffic study, just because that would potentially impact the flow out. So, that's why that one was continued. It looks like in the most recent drawing that I believe we received today, if... I think it was today?
Yeah.
So, staff has not had a whole lot of time to review it. But based on what it looks like is that second driveway would be... Now on the lot with the apartments rather than the lot with the proposed mixed-use building. So, that would remedy the two driveways on the frontage.
Okay.
So, how long does staff need to review this, Patrick? Well, Tammy's gone.
Tammy was out today, so she hasn't had time to review, but we... It varies on what it is, but ideally, I would like us to have everything reviewed by the time the agenda goes out. Just because if you submit it afterwards, it doesn't necessarily become public view if it's just held on by staff to the meeting.
Okay. And the last time we met, I asked the applicant about that fence getting repaired. And they said it'd be sometime after the first of the year. Do we know when this building's gonna get built?
I think this is...
Are you Dustin?
Yeah, I'm Dustin.
You're up. Welcome.
So, Dustin...
If you could just push that, that'd be great.
Dustin Hendrickson, 1139 Indian Hills Road, Brookings, South Dakota. Did you guys get this?
We got it.
Okay.
So, Dustin, I was just asking, staff at the last meeting asked you about that fence. Yeah. That needs to be repaired, and you said it'd be after the first of the year.
Yeah, it was the one that had the ground thawed.
Yeah.
Like, on the, at the beginning of the year.
How does that coincide with when the building's gonna get done?
Oh, it has nothing to do with that.
No, but timing-wise, will one get done?
Oh, the fence will get done way sooner than the building would.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um...
And last time, we talked about traffic study. Has anybody looked into that?
Uh, one of the, one of the guys on the group was looking in the traffic study, but we didn't get anything back. The civil engineer did talk a little bit about the traffic study. And said there's a whole bunch of things you could ask for. But he doesn't, he didn't think it would really, by adding the 22 units, he didn't think it was that much of a difference from what it was originally zoned for. And then we did eliminate that. We just kept the original opening that was already there. And then we added one more opening... On the south there, as far away as we could from the stop sign. And then... Put that, we were able to use that driveway to go through that parking lot. It's almost like it was designed like that, and then they must've changed their mind and ran that road through. So, that was a good suggestion.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, we're keeping the existing approach?
Yeah.
Of Sandstone?
Yeah, the one that's there right now. We would use that, yep.
And we're just adding the one off of Meadowbrook Trail for the business?
Correct.
And then redirecting the R2 off of Meadowbrook Trail instead of Sandstone? So, we're actually reducing the load off Sandstone?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, because this'll have more of a load. What's originally there has more of a load than what we're putting, or what we're proposing.
So, it's actually, even without the traffic study. What I'm seeing is a reduced... Access requirement off Sandstone.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then we added that loading zone, too. That's on there as well.
Uh, I think the one thing that we're missing is the, the loading's...
The garbage enclosure?
Well, they, yeah, the trash enclosure and loading, but it looks like you have, you now have way more than... The required number of parking stalls.
There is a spot for the loading zone, though, in this, right on the south side of the building. There's that 24-foot opening. And it's a bunch bigger than 40 foot, so it should meet that 15 by 40. We can mark that up, too. And then we have additional parking, too. We have an extra nine spaces.
Yep. Yeah, I, it appears that, uh... The applicant, Tim, sorry.
Yeah.
Has addressed most of my concerns from last meeting, so...
Okay. And we do have a fence there, but I would actually prefer to put trees. I don't know what your guys'... Because it's not really residential. It's already another apartment. I don't know how you feel if we'd put trees there instead of a fence, but... Fences seem to be a lot of maintenance, and they're always blowing over.
What do you guys think about screening between? Don't we say in our ordinance that we can do either or? Or does it have to be?
Paul's cracking it down.
This one, are we gonna have? Uh, residences on top?
Yeah, floors two and three would be residents.
So... Lot 15 and 16 on that map is what we're talking about, right? So, this is actually two different building sites?
Correct.
We have in front of us one building site?
Yeah, we proposed to eliminate the driveway that's currently going through and to redirect that driveway. And to reclaim that as one lot, because when we tried to put it together using two lots and doing two separate buildings with all the different restrictions, there was like no buildable square footprint. So, we couldn't really do anything.
Gotcha.
So, basically... Your, um... Second application from two weeks ago, you're removing...
Correct.
For the additional access.
Correct.
Off of the business parcels.
Correct.
So, we're just down to the one application for residential above general business?
Correct.
Thank you.
And that is item number six or seven?
Not the one permit, we would still need you to take some kind of action to officially...
Item number six.
Item number six?
Yes, that, that's the one where the dwelling is above the first floor.
And then...
I'm just gonna read the, the regulation between the fence.
Okay.
So, it's a fence, wall, berm, or shrubbery, six feet in height, in a character necessary for adequate screening of a GB property from an abutting R property or a residential. So, fence, wall, berm, or shrubbery, six feet.
Okay. So, we've already covered it, so, yeah.
Do pine trees count as shrubbery, you think? Or do they have to be tighter? Does that have to be actually a hedge?
You're the building official.
Are they mature trees?
Yeah, I mean, we'll put in nice, I'd rather put in nice trees than a shrub on, I mean... And it should provide plenty of screening. We'll stagger them and stuff.
If they're, if they're mature, if I can entertain it.
Yeah.
You can't cut a swatch off of a pine tree and stick it down. That doesn't count.
A dog would do it.
It has to be... No.
So, volume item number six, though, we will need to officially... Vote on the CUP for the dwelling unit above the first floor.
Okay.
Several hours.
And we would need you to vote on the conditional use permit that was for the second driveway, if it's not...
Okay.
A thing anymore. It might just be a, whatever you want, however you wanna handle it, too.
Does anybody else up here have any questions for the applicant? Does anybody else have any questions about this issue? None? Okay. Anybody else have anything else? Otherwise, I entertain a motion.
About trees, like fir trees go all the way to the ground, but leaf trees, the trunk is, you know, way high before the leaves start. And then, so it wouldn't provide much of a screen.
Right.
So, I think, I'm guessing we're talking about fir trees? Yeah?
We usually do a mixture of deciduous and non-deciduous, so we usually provide adequate screening where it's needed, and then where there's already screening, like a garage, then we put some, uh, leaf trees.
Okay. And then number seven, if, if that's not a thing anymore, can the applicant just... Yeah, I can't think of the word I want, but...
Withdraw?
Withdraw it, yeah. Then we wouldn't...
How is, how have we handled that in the past with withdraw?
Can I, can I officially withdraw his application? On, on the driveway, additional driveway?
Okay, I can, I would do that. I officially withdraw the third driveway CUP application.
Item number seven's no longer on the list. Sweet. Our agenda got shorter.
I will speak with Melissa and find out if there's anything more we need to do to officially withdraw, and we'll, we'll let you know if there's any, you know, procedure we have to go through.
Would we need table that?
All right, Patrick, you're the, you're the lawyer. Do we need to just deny it?
Or do we reject the application?
So, with denial, you come with the, you can't come back with the same four, six months? With, withdraw, I imagine he could...
I don't, I don't see us needing it.
Withdraw, but...
I don't see us needing it, so you can deny, you can deny it.
Look, how about we table it until we hear back from council?
I, I would...
On the appropriate procedure?
I would say we just deny it.
Just reject it?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the application for residential above general business and item number six.
Okay.
And to deny...
Let's just do one at a time.
Okay.
You need a second?
I'll second it.
Any, anybody got any conditions? I can think, I can think of three. Staff needs to review this, because they have not. We still need that traffic study, and I want that fence fixed.
Staff review, traffic study.
The fence is being fixed, but that is not the same exact ownership group as this one. Related parties, but not the exact same, like... I'm in charge of fixing the fence, but...
Let's arrest you. I guess, just because there are some common owners, it'd be nice to... We, we really want that fence fixed.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be fixed.
But I don't know if we can legally withhold what happens on one lot because of issues happening on another lot.
There was a massive confusion on that fence, too. We didn't really realize that we were responsible till like two months ago, probably, and then we set in motion to get it fixed right away, but there was, everyone was too busy, so...
Okay. You made the motion. Would you like to amend it to include the staff review and the traffic study? Does anybody else think, wanna see that?
Yeah, I agree about the traffic study. Tammy was pretty, pretty clear on that at the last meeting, that, that that would need to be done.
So, who made for? Yeah, you made the motion. Do you want it?
Do you wanna put conditions on your motion, Brian?
It's his motion. I can't.
No.
You made the motion.
No, you made the motion, Brian.
You'd have to amend it.
No, he made the motion to approve it based on the three conditions.
No, it was a discussion item after the motion was made in second.
There was a motion in second, and he said, what do you think about three conditions?
You can amend the motion if you'd like. Boy, we're digging deep into Robert's rules here.
Withdraw, withdraw the, withdraw the issue of the fence, because it's on, it's on a different parcel than what we're talking about here.
But you would like to include the staff review and the traffic study?
Staff review and, yep.
And you'd like to include that in your second?
Second, yeah.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number seven is off. Item number eight is a rezone application for 1,024 North Split Rock Boulevard. Hold on, let me get there. This is Marlon Hofer?
No, you're open, Eric.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, the reason for that rezone is we want to make sure there's a terrace out over the lake, no matter, you'll have to forgive me. I'm getting permanent in the land.
Okay.
Keep, keep your teeth, your paper, your college, kids' college.
Okay.
Um, but we want to make sure there's a terrace out there. We're doing a feasibility study. We should have... Any day now for two hotels in the event center back there. And if we have to go down to one hotel, that's probably gonna happen no matter what. But I'd like to turn the rest of that hotel site into professional office space out there.
Okay.
So, that's the reason for the rezone.
Ah... Uh... Patrick, do you guys have any, um, concerns with this?
We haven't had a whole lot of time to review. My only thing would be, your rezone is just approving the land to be rezoned. What is included on the site plan is not, we are not giving a yea or nay to the site plan. We have not reviewed it for setbacks or anything of that nature yet.
This, I mean, just in your very quick opinion, do you see any issues with rezoning this small section to general business from NRC?
I, I do not. I...
Okay.
I think the applicant will make good use of it. They seem to have a pretty solid plan of what they would like to do.
Yeah.
So... And we'll, we'll continue to work with them to make sure the, the layout works, what we have in the code, and see what we need to do to make their project work.
Does anybody up here have any questions or concerns about this?
No, this is in back of Brandon 90?
Yeah, out at the west end of the lake. So, that terrace would be there.
There's, uh...
In the middle.
One entrance.
Middle of the lake.
One entrance to Brandon 90. You're gonna have another entrance somewhere to the hotel part?
Uh, no, that's what the loop road's for.
This is, would be behind the hotels, like abutting the lake that's back there?
It just seems like a lot of activity for one entrance off of Split Rock there.
I think there'll be a Split Rock entrance, and there might be one off of Birch as well.
Yes.
Okay.
We, we covered that a long time ago.
The DOT is taking Split Rock down three to three and a half feet. So, that's gonna help everybody.
Yes.
Straighten it out instead of the hump there.
Okay.
A question for Patrick. What's staff have to review on rezoning?
The main questions on a rezone would be, you will open up land to the list of uses of that zone you are rezoning it to. So, would that additional smidge of land be appropriate for the zone of the property that is right next to it?
So, it's already general business?
Correct.
And NRC kind of budding up to each other, so we're not...
The lake is NRC, the rest of the property is general business.
Does anybody have any other thoughts on this?
The lake that will be there.
And this is a recommendation to city council that has the ultimate vote.
Yep. Any else have any questions? Brooks?
I was just gonna say, I don't think I see any issue with this. I think it's, when we considered this a long time ago, it was to rezone this. It's sort of like it's with a straight line, and now it has a little cutout back into the other, so I don't see this huge difference, 0.6 acres, so...
Okay.
Are there any residences that are abutting that, that would have anything to say?
There'll be no residences down there that I'm aware of at this point.
How, how, how wide is the, the widest point from east to west? Of that little crescent shape? Where you wanna put the patio?
Oh, I'd say... 400 feet.
This? From there to there?
Yeah, there's only 20,000 square feet in there. Nothing you can build in there and meet that gap.
From here to here? From here to here? From here to here?
Oh, from the deal to the lake?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is right, look straight out over the lake.
Right.
There'll be a walking trail around the lake.
Like, how wide do you think, how much feet between here and here, do you think?
I gotta guess, less than 100. Well, maybe 100.
Like, where you wanna put the patio?
Yeah.
100 feet?
Okay.
Yeah, I think originally, we were looking at having a patio that could hold 1,200 people.
Okay. All right, that answers my question. Thanks.
The two things, when I spoke with Tammy, that she wanted to see from this property was, was the site plan, and she wanted to see plat work done on the property. As far as I know, Darryl could correct me if I'm wrong, since my information may be outdated, but the, the issue so far was the infrastructure wasn't quite in enough for Tammy to approve a plat. I think that's where it stood.
The lot wasn't big enough?
The infrastructure wasn't in place completely for the plat to be approved. I think that's where it left off.
We still had work to do on the lift station, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, you guys are running the lift station. We're putting an eight-foot fence around that, uh, six feet of white fence and two feet of lattice on top.
A rezone doesn't really affect the plating process, though.
I still gotta come back to you.
I'm just conveying what she wanted to say.
Anything, anyway, so...
Yeah, so even if we rezone this little chunk of property, a plat still has to come in and be approved and reviewed, so...
Correct.
Yes. Any other questions, or would somebody like to make a motion?
Just commentary. I think it makes perfect sense to do this. It moves the ownership and maintenance of that little crescent-shaped piece onto the business side of things rather than the, uh, non-business side, so...
Okay.
No different than what happens downtown Sioux Falls along the river.
Correct.
I think it's a, I think it's a good move.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Sorry. Make a motion to recommend approval to city council.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Very good. All right, any other discussion?
We're an inch away from getting a monster out there.
Good.
After we've been waiting for, because it'll all fall into place after that.
All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number nine, uh, home occupation application for 1,506 South Parkview. Let's see. Enter Matthew? Hello?
Good evening.
Tell us what you'd like to do.
Can I start by introducing myself?
You can, absolutely.
Uh, my name is Matthew Saken, and my wife and I just, or my wife and I, Rebecca, we just moved to Brandon about five weeks ago. We have two daughters. Uh, our youngest, our oldest is three. Her name is Emerson, and our youngest is Zarea. She's 10 months old. So, we moved to Brandon, because we wanted a smaller community to raise our family in, and from everything we researched and everyone we talked to, that Brandon offered a better school district. And so, we wanted to get our kids in a position where they could go to school here. And so, we absolutely love our house. We love our community, our neighborhood, and the friendly atmosphere that we've come to know here. Uh, what I am, I'm a diesel technician by trade. That's what I do for my day job. I grew up around my family farms, always working on different stuff, tinkering, fixing tractors. Uh, and then I went through different auto tech programs in high school, and I graduated from Lake Area Tech with my degree for diesel technology. I worked at Butler Machinery Company, and then I currently work in Dell Rapids at LG Everest. And so, being a mechanic is part of who I am, is part of how I grew up. But what I'm applying for is a home occupation permit to do mechanic work for, uh, basic repairs for vehicles. So, in my previous home, we lived in the west side of Sioux Falls, and I had the same business set up through the city of Sioux Falls. It was set up in February of 2021, so just a little over a year and a half that I had it. Uh, I have my sales tax license through the state, so I can, uh, charge sales tax for both the city and the state. I don't do any advertising for this, but what kind of the nuts and bolts of it is, is I work in my garage, and I work on one vehicle at a time. As a, as I have time, they come to me. I make the repairs, and then they go back out. And so... The, the biggest thing for me, and my wife always tells me, is to not be too busy, so I don't like to have vehicles sitting around, so they only come in, uh, you know, a few minutes before I'm ready to work on it, and they go out as soon as I'm done. And the entire time that I had this business in Sioux Falls, I received no complaints, no issues from neighbors, uh, no, no problems of any sort. So, I'm always willing to work on my clients' vehicles, and I love to, to teach them about different mechanic things and give them little helpful tips. And if they wanna learn more about their car, I usually will try to help them, you know, figure out, hey, this is how you can... And, uh, if they wanna learn more about their car, I usually will try to help them, you know, figure out, hey, this is how you can change a tire or things like that. Uh, safety is my top priority in the business that I had and would have continued that. I treat every vehicle as if it was my family, 'cause driving home in it at night. So, I take my time and I make sure that everything is done right. And as I've started to meet my new neighbors in the last about five weeks, I've had several of them ask me, you know, hey, what do you do, you know, and I explained I'm a mechanic. Uh, many of them have asked if I'd be willing to work on their, their cars with their kids in high school or, and, uh, I told them I had to move and I had to figure all this out first, so. But the, this business is part of how I provide for my family, but also to provide a much-needed and, uh, contribute a needed service to the community. So, that's just a little bit about me, about the business. Uh, I thank you for your time in this and I ask for your support and if you have any questions that I could answer for you guys.
First of all, kudos, you're probably one of the best-prepared applicants we've ever had.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Probably also the tallest we've ever had.
I'm only six-ten, so.
Wow, yes, only six-ten. Wow. Um, and also, I'd like to thank you for doing it right, 'cause I know a lot of people have started things like this in their garages without coming in here, so I do appreciate that. That being said, anybody have any questions for the applicant?
One for staff, you got any comments from neighbors?
We had one lady come in, I'm not sure if she is here.
Yep.
She is here, so that, as far as I know, she is the only one that has commented and she will provide testimony when the time comes.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
You indicated, um, that you had this business in Sioux Falls. Were there any conditions on that business and location within Sioux Falls?
So, the conditions that were in place was that, uh, I couldn't work in the driveway, which I don't, I just work in the garage. And, uh, I had to be able to provide one off-street parking spot and trying to think if there's any others. Not that I can think of. Yeah, so the hours, the, the hours in Sioux Falls, um, when I submitted the form, I don't remember exactly what the hours I put on for that, but when I talked to them about changing hours, there was no issue with it as long as there was no noticeable noise past the property lines. So, when I work in the evenings or even most of the time during the day, I just close the garage door. That way I don't bother my neighbors and can work in peace and quiet, so.
So, what would you anticipate your hours to be?
So, I work, uh, full-time job in Dell Rapids and so, the time after that is when I would have. So, I get home around six, so it could be from six to eight-thirty, but usually about the latest. Uh, Fridays, I have half-days, so I can work, you know, in the afternoons on those and that's usually when I'll do a lot of the business. Occasionally, if I don't finish something on Friday night, I'll finish it Saturday morning. But usually, nothing Sunday. Uh, if there's an emergency, like some of these car tire falls off or something, I'll usually look at it in the evening, but I usually try to maintain things, you know, Thursday through, Thursday through Friday and then into Saturday morning if I need to.
Anybody else have any questions? No?
Just to note, on the applicant's application, he listed hours of operation as four to eight P.M., Thursday through Saturday.
Okay.
What is that?
On, on page forty-six of the packet on the application, the applicant listed his hours of operation as four to eight P.M., Thursday through Saturday.
Is that a picture of a, what we have there?
That is correct, yes.
And you'd be doing the work in, I assume in that left garage there?
That is correct.
Okay, anybody, um, anybody from the audience have any comments? You're welcome to come up if you'd like. Um, yeah, please, please do come up and, uh, address the commission at least. Yes, thank you. You're good, it's already on. Turn it back on. It was already on. Nah, you're good.
All right, Dean Simon, sixteen hundred South Locust. Um, I just, just a confirmation question, what I was wondering, so it's one vehicle at a time you're working? They're not gonna be piled up down the street or anything like that?
Yes, that's correct, I only work on one at a time, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions, come on up? We swear it's painless, just come on, we're, we're nice.
Lori Furness, four oh nine West Ironwood Street. My concern is the dogs. He has two large dogs and they bark constantly. And if you have people coming at different hours of the day or in the evening, the dogs, they start barking six o'clock in the morn, sometimes four o'clock in the morning and it's, it's starting to get pretty old and they bark pretty much all day long. We have neighbors with other pets. I have nothing against dogs, I have nothing against animals, but it's the barking that is just getting really, really annoying. And they're starting to, if, like, some of other neighbors have, um, pets, we hear barking now and then, but it's nothing like what those two are. And I, our bedroom butts up to the back of their yard, welcome to the neighborhood. But it's really getting old at, like I said, six o'clock in the morning, six-thirty this morning. Couple of weeks ago, well, just shortly after we moved in, it was all day long. I'm home a lot during the day. It was just constant barking and it's really starting to get annoying. And I, my concern is if people come at different times of the day, are those dogs gonna be barking every time somebody comes and every time somebody leaves?
Okay.
Do you want me to answer?
Do you have anything else?
I do, actually.
Okay, go ahead.
My concern is air compressors. Are you gonna be having air compressors running during the time that you are working? Is that something that we have to listen to, like during the night, if they take off during the night? I guess that's, that's a concern.
I'm writing these down, so if you need help.
Because we would probably hear that as well.
Okay.
Um, and I'm just a little concerned, like I said, with how do, are, is there a guarantee that it's gonna be just one vehicle at a time? Is there gonna be stuff that piles up, car parts, that type of thing, that's gonna be in the backyard? 'Cause our yard overlooks. You know, and that's, that's a concern. Is, is it going to affect the, the neighborhood in a negative way?
Okay, anything else?
Um, and if cars, if you can't get them started, what happens to them? Are you gonna just leave, you know, do they sit there, are they gonna get towed away? Is there a guarantee you do fix them every time? And I guess is the neighborhood zoned for a business of this nature?
Well, that's why we're here.
Yeah, so that's, those are my questions, my concerns. Four oh nine West Ironwood Street.
Go ahead.
Uh, as far as the dogs, uh, I, I do apologize about that. I do, I know I have two large dogs and they are full of energy, giant teddy bears, but they are dogs and dogs bark. Uh, as far as them barking when people are coming over, that is not a problem for me to put them inside. They mainly bark when people walk by their, by the yard and, uh, I understand that could be frustrating. And again, I, I do apologize for that. Uh, it, it's hard to, to stop a dog from always barking. Uh, I can definitely work on that. Um, as far as when people come over, usually, I mean, it's not a problem to let them in the house. As far as throughout the entire day, when we moved in, yes, the dogs were outside for the first couple of days while we were home. But my wife and I both work, uh, she works eight to five and I work six to five. So, our dogs are inside from about eight A.M. till five P.M. Unless, you know, we have company over or something like that. And I cannot remember all the questions.
Um, okay, so, the air compressors and noise from air compressors?
Yes, so I do have an air compressor, I use it very, very little. Um, I use, most of my tools are like electric, they're battery-operated, uh, that's just my preference. They're, it's what I use at work, so it's what I like at home. Uh, as far as an air compressor, I mean, yes, I do have one, uh, but when it's inside the garage, I was blowing out my sprinklers, uh, I believe it was last week, and I had it in the garage and I was walking around and you couldn't hear it really past the sidewalk at all. And even then, it was a very muffled noise. Uh, but again, I very rarely use an air compressor, so.
Okay. Uh, cars and car parts sitting around the yard?
No, no, no car parts sitting around the yard, no cars. Uh, my, my kids also play in this yard, so for me to keep anything out there, I wouldn't want them to get hurt with anything. Uh, how I do this is that when a vehicle comes in, I will look at it and usually I'll look at it before it ever comes in. You know, maybe they'll stop by for five minutes or I'll meet them up somewhere, look at it, figure out what it needs. I'll have the parts ordered when the vehicle shows up and they're just in my garage, usually sitting on my workbench for maybe a day or two. And then when I'm done with them, I dispose of them, scrap metal I take to the scrap iron. I don't have any very minimal hazardous chemicals, but when I do, I dispose of those correctly. And as far as any other parts, I don't, I usually keep them all inside if there's any.
Okay. And then if a car doesn't start, it won't be sitting around?
No.
It'll be towed away?
Yep, it will be towed away. Uh, it's, I'm very used to fixing cars that don't start. That's, that's what I'm supposed to do as part of my job. So, I mean, I get them inside and I'll fix them. Uh, they'll be inside the garage until they're fixed and then when they're brought out, then the person will pick them up.
Okay.
But yes, if I couldn't get one started for some reason, I would have it towed away.
Okay, anybody else have any questions, concerns? Come on up, hold on.
Okay.
Joanne Lynn, fifteen oh four South Locust Avenue.
Hi.
Hi, the question I would like to ask is, um, where is the proposed parking spot going to be? If we could find that out, where that is going to be?
Okay.
Um, as Lori had indicated as well, um, I reside just to the backside of the home and, um, and I know this is not about barking dogs, but because of the increased traffic back and forth too, uh, my concern is they're gonna be outside even more. They're very aggressive, um, grabbing at the fence. I have animals in my yard, I'm a little fearful for them. Um, there is a fence that would start. My request would be maybe that the fence just be finished all the way across. I'm really afraid they're gonna get under it or jump on the electrical box and into my yard and my cat is defenseless, he's fat, he can't move very fast and he has no front claws also. Anyway, um, it's just be a more enjoyable backyard if we could. But anyway, um, I, my biggest concern too is about the parking because since we live on the side street on Locust, I, I personally don't, just don't wanna see cars park there because, um, we also use that space. Yeah.
Okay.
Just 'cause we use that, I can't speak for the other neighbors on the Parkview side of it, but I would be on the Locust side of it, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
On the, the fence on my backyard there, the park you was talking about, there is a four-foot tall chain-link fence, uh, that was existing before I moved in and, uh, I have since finished a wood picket fence continuing from that. At my previous house, my German Shepherd, he's a hundred pounds, he looks threatening and he does bark, he does growl. I've never had an incident with any bites or any dog fights, anything like that. My previous house, where we lived for four and a half years, we had him for four years there. It was a four-foot chain-link fence. Uh, he never once jumped it, he never once went under it, he never once got out. Uh, the other dog I have is a lab and, yes, she lived with us for six months before we moved and same thing, never had them get out, get under. And as far as the parking spaces, so it is a three-stall garage and I keep two vehicles inside my garage. So, I have room to put another vehicle inside the garage if I choose to. But also, then there is the parking in front of all three doors. There is currently, I have a third vehicle, which is my pickup, sits in between the two stalls. And so, on either side of that, you can fit two cars to the right of it and two cars to the left of it as you are looking at it.
Okay. So, Patrick?
Yep.
A procedural thing, we can treat a home occupation sort of like we treat a conditional use, right? We can put stipulations on a home occupation as far as parking, um, cars, clutter, outdoor storage, all that kinda stuff.
Correct.
Yes. So, it'd be just like the conditional use we approved earlier. We, we certainly can put conditions on it to, to make sure that the business will fit with some of the complaints that we've heard, if, if that's the direction that these guys would like to go. So, that being said, I'll, I'll ask for any other comments? Any questions, any thoughts?
Is your garage, um, conditioned, heated, air-conditioned?
It's heated, it's not air-conditioned.
Insulated?
It is insulated, yes.
Yes.
So, what are your plans during the summer for?
So, for my day job, I work outside most of the days, um, no matter how hot it is. Or if I'm in a shop, there's no air conditioning, so it doesn't bother me to have the doors closed and there's a ceiling fan in there, just set up a fan. You get sweaty, you get dirty, that's part of the physical labor part of it. Uh, that doesn't, the, the summertime doesn't bother me just as much as the wintertime doesn't. I, I don't know if I answered your question there.
Yeah, just concerned about noise with overhead doors, leftover.
Okay, anybody else have any? Questions? Yes, sir.
You mentioned that you, um, kinda specialize in, uh, diesel. Would you be doing any diesel work in there? I know the fumes from diesel are a little more offensive than gas.
So, as far as like a diesel pickup, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, it's very rare, I mean, I would, I'd be fine with the, the option to do that. Uh, when I get into the basic repair, I don't usually get too much into injection pumps and injectors and that's where you get a lot of that smell from a diesel, uh, same with a car. But just with my time availability, I see that it's better spent doing, you know, not to, to, to do an injection pump repair, for instance, is, is several hours and it's time-consuming and it's, I, I guess I don't usually have an issue. I've, I've only worked on maybe two diesels in the last year and a half, uh, at home, so.
Anyone else? Anybody would like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to approve it, but, uh, there's some conditions that I need to follow.
There's some conditions I think we should put on it, uh, that we talked about. I don't know how you can qualify noise.
Well, we already have that in our ordinance, I believe, right, that you can't?
There's, it's, it's a little bit with code enforcement and then a little bit with the police department, depending upon the situation, but, um, there, in a generic, very generic, white, um, view of things that, you know, noise cannot be excessive or you're gonna see somebody from the city, so.
Okay.
So.
Go ahead, Chuck.
The people that are concerned about the animal noise, they can call the police department.
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, we don't have to have a condition on that, because they can already address it.
Right, yes, yes, sir.
Yes, we would be addressing the noise that went along with the mechanic work, yes. Okay, anything else?
This isn't for noise per se, but the applicant mentioned that, that at previous place, he had a condition imposed in Sioux Falls that was no driveway repair, which to me would speak to noise also if all the repairs done inside. And in the form that the applicant signed, you know, it, it addresses there, no exterior storage, so that's addressed there already, I believe, but so I think no driveway repair would do a lot.
Okay, anything else?
I think we should, uh, reiterate what's on the form, that the hours of operation, four to eight, Thursday through Saturday, no storing of cars in the driveway.
So, can we, if we say no, So can we, if we say no exterior storage, would that be both cars and car parts?
I'd leave that up to Paul if he can interpret it like that.
Paul? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess, I'd, I'd clar, I'd like to clarify that, no materials, non, non-owner vehicles or materials to be stored outside for more than six hours.
Cars or...
I mean, obviously the gentleman works. If somebody wants to drop off their vehicle at noon.
Right.
He's gotta have a little bit of time to get it inside his garage, so.
Can I, a- as far as the hours of operation, if you'd like me to stick to them, would it be possible to make it a, like, four to ten P M? And that gives me just a little bit of a grace period where if, you know, things don't always go right. So it gives me a little bit of a grace period to, to correct those, but still ten P M is, is not too, uh, or, or maybe even nine thirty.
What are your thoughts on that? Is it hours?
I'd like to hear input from the audience.
The application was for till eight, so I think we need to allow the audience to comment on that.
Anyone? So we already have regulations that prevent excessive noise. Noise complaints happen after what, ten or eleven o'clock? Is it eleven o'clock?
There's a time limit, I mean...
I mean, in general.
Yeah.
So when Chuck throws a rager that lasts until midnight, the cops can get called?
Well, either, either the police department's called or I'm called.
Okay.
And I'm here till five and they're here twenty-four seven, so.
There you go. So yes, excessive noise, you, I mean, right, you'd get a visit from our police department.
It's just a judgment call, sir.
Yes.
So, I, I know this is not Sioux Falls, but when I was in Sioux Falls, I know they had a noise ordinance.
Yep.
Or at least for the business, I believe it was ten P M. And I may be wrong on that, but I believe that's what it was.
Noise ordinance is outside of our area of expertise.
Where's the line?
I'd be all right with an hour though, given it till like nine thirty.
Okay.
The line might be, hours of operation is a clear line where noise is subjective.
Yes.
Objective. So, and anyone has a different opinion of what is too much noise, whereas a nine-thirty deadline is not as open to interpretation.
Okay.
I don't know how the neighbors would feel about hours of operation. Any thoughts?
Well, listen, my concern is as long as the dogs are barking every time somebody shows up at nine o'clock, they're, our, our dogs. So it's, that's... It's, and maybe the answer is a bark collar, I, I, you know, something, you know, to, I, I, I something to kinda keep them from barking so much. Like I said, I don't have a problem with dogs, I love dogs, but just when they bark constantly like that and that's gonna be at nine o'clock, ten o'clock, six o'clock in the morning, it's not fun. Especially when I have to do a little work for today too.
So I guess my question would be is how would I... I, obviously I didn't know that my, I, and I haven't spoken to my neighbors about my dogs, I didn't know that about them. This is news to me. I know they're loud, I know they bark, that's not news to me. Uh, but that there was an issue with that. But my question would be is how do I quantify when my dog is outside and I'm not working on anything? Or is this a totally different issue?
I, I, I think it's a completely different issue. I, I, I believe that, that, that your dog's barking is something, if your neighbors have a problem with your dog's barking, then they should be calling law enforcement and, and having a noise complaint. That I don't believe should weigh into whether or not they have an hours of operation on a home occupation.
I'll second that.
So, hold on. So he made a, he made a motion with an open-ended?
Yeah, let's, can we reiterate?
So we need to, we need to make a motion with actually stating what the terms are. And I can help you with what I have written down.
I need your help.
Unless, unless anybody has anything else they would like to add.
I just would like one, I just...
Hold, hold on, it's, uh, buh 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 buh, can you come up here, please? Thank you. Sorry, it's not really an open forum.
Just one other thing, and I neglected to, uh, ask, was signage. Are you gonna be putting like signs up to indicate that your business is there and is that allowable? Is there something?
We, we...
What are the rules and regulations on that?
So we do allow for signage of a certain size.
Yeah, I see Paul looking, maybe Paul can read us what it says in our ordinance concerning signs.
But we allow for signs in anybody's yard.
Right.
Right, but it's a business and it's a sign and it's on par.
We, we, um, so we, we are not allowed to edit the content of a sign, we can limit the size.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is there, is there...
Size?
I can imagine it's gonna be like a big neon sign you can put up. That's, that's why.
It would be the same size as a booster club sign.
Yeah.
Okay, so... Anyway, anybody else have anything for?
Can we reiterate the motion, please?
Yeah.
Um, so this is what I have written down.
So I make a motion that we approve it with the conditions that there's no driveway repair, no exterior storage of car parts.
Or cars.
For repaired cars for six hours. And the hours of operations are from four o'clock till nine thirty.
Thursday through Saturday.
Thursday through Saturday.
So I guess my one question is on Saturday. And this is on my fault, I apologize for this, that I did.
Can you work more than four to nine thirty on Saturday?
Yeah, like if I, you know, nine o'clock in the morning when, uh, it's not too early.
Right. So would you like to change your hours on Saturday?
If I may, please.
Okay, what would you like?
Would a nine to five be reasonable?
Anybody have any concerns with nine to five on Saturday?
Nope.
So...
Can we clarify the motion to customer vehicles?
Customer.
I, I don't wanna...
Yep.
I don't wanna create an issue between
Personal car parts.
Personal vehicles and customer vehicles. I mean, everybody's personal vehicles get parked outside, so.
We let people park personal vehicles on the street, so.
Right.
So, I make a motion to approve, again, uh, no driveway repair, no exterior storage of cars or parts.
Customer cars.
Customer cars or parts.
Right. Customer cars, uh, for more than six hours. Um, hours of operation, four to nine thirty, Thursday through Friday, and nine A M to five P M on Saturday.
So there's a motion. Second. And a second. Motion and a second. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There you go.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Um, item number ten, I have a rezone application for sixteen oh four to sixteen twenty East Redwood Boulevard. Page fifty-three. Dustin, you're up again.
Dustin Hendrickson, eleven thirty-nine Indian Hills Road, Brookings, South Dakota.
Okay. Tell us what you'd like to do.
We'd like to put approximately two hundred multifamily units on this parcel of ground. Um, they're all thick, or they're all twelve plexes. There'd be a really nice tree line all around. There's already a fence all around the property. And then there's already a really, really mature tree line, so we'd thin that tree line back to where it's on the, all on the edge, so it keeps it private. And it keeps our vantage point looking basically to the southeast. And we don't really impede any of what's going on there with the, uh, single family that's there now.
Okay.
And we just, that, we'd use that one single entrance. And there's, you know, there's nothing really to the east of there, you know, it's just the river and some fields, so.
Staff, do you guys review this? Do you have any thoughts on this?
So this is the, the land that went to both P and Z and council that was annexed into the city. One thing that I'm sure Tammy would want me to note that was also noted at the time is that the city is unable to provide sewer to this property.
Correct. And you know that?
Yes, we are aware that needs a lift station.
So as with the last rezone, what you are looking at is not necessarily the layout. While that, that helps, you're looking at is the use appropriate.
Yeah, the site plan would have to be worked through later, correct? Yes.
And this is not a final site plan, this is just our initial, we feel like we can make it quite a bit better.
I do, I do believe we require them to submit a preliminary plan. Yes?
I believe so.
Yes, okay. So then the question is, does this fit for a, what are we going for, an R three? Yes, an R three zone. Any questions up here, comments from the commission?
So just a couple of comments. Obviously there's gonna have to be a replating of the parcels, three parcels. Uh, question for staff, when we hear that there's no sewer provided to this, uh, does that mean no sewer provided to all three of the existing parcels? Or just the one that was?
I believe, I believe there is, I, that is true. I think it stops somewhere in the twin homes to the, the left.
Right by Yellowstone.
Okay.
Yep. There's four plexes, stop it, we're not standing here.
And then just a comment to the applicant, um, this exceeds our, um, thirty-six unit limit for allowed dwellings. So you'll have to come in for conditional use. Are you aware of that?
No, uh, no, I wasn't aware of that actual step, but there's so many steps that that's fine, it's fine to... Yeah, well, we're, I mean, someone on the team's aware of that step, yes.
Yeah, so our current ordinance says anything exceeding thirty-six units on a single parcel requires a conditional use, so.
Okay.
You will have to come back for...
Okay.
Because you're exceeding that, that number on, on the same parcel, so.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can deal, deal with that, no problem.
Does anybody else have any questions for him or thoughts on this? I'm getting there. Thanks for reminding me though. I was sick for a while. Anybody have any comments on this? Come on up, man. I know it well enough, I can call in.
Charlie Bigelow, six oh eight North Oak Ridge Road.
Hello, sir.
How many people are gonna live in this area? How many apartments are there? Three hundred people.
Yes.
So, my question for you in, on Redwood Boulevard is
Yep.
the traffic is going to be horrendous.
So this...
For that many people living in that location
Yep.
and their access point in and out is gonna be right in front of my house, basically. Which is gonna make the travel in there pretty darn difficult.
So if we rezoned it to R three, what they're allowed to build is thirty-six units.
Mm-hmm.
They would have to come back for a conditional use to build anything more than that.
Okay.
So by rezoning it, we're allowing them to build thirty-six, but we're not allowing them to build two hundred necessarily. So there's more steps in this process.
Okay.
Um, besides just, right?
Right.
So, the, the question for these people is whether or not they think that this is appropriate for an R three zone, which would be thirty-six units.
Okay. So I, I think that, that would be the concern. I know my neighbors aren't here. I showed up because I saw the sign and, um, I, I, I would be very concerned if it was that much density in that smaller location, especially with traffic. And especially what's going to happen with Redwood Boulevard, which the traffic is already increasing. And once it goes all the way up, up the hill, if it ever does, um, then it's gonna increase the traffic even that much more. And the access point with three hundred people coming in, that means there's probably gonna be more than three hundred cars.
Okay.
So that increases the traffic quite substantially, so I think that's gonna be my, our concern would be in the neighborhood.
It would actually be less than three hundred cars, three hundred people with children and stuff, so it's usually...
Yeah, but, but people have two or three cars.
Yep.
I mean, that's, that's the reality of it, so if it's two people living in one apartment, they have two cars.
Yep.
It could be, it could be four hundred cars.
Okay, so...
From experience, though, the, the most apartment parking lots have plenty of open spaces, so you can count, I mean, if you count what's there, I can guarantee you that one, you've got many cars in that lot.
Right.
And, and it begins...
That is a concern that people are gonna have along that core.
And we'll, we'll be addressing that when they come for us, provide us a site plan with what they're actually wanna build there and with a conditional use to go over the allotted units that we allow.
Okay.
So, yeah, you can come back and see us again.
I probably will.
I love it.
So a question for the applicant.
Yes.
Um, sixteen units, how many? Sorry, sixteen buildings, how many units?
Twelve, these are twelve units per building.
So sixteen times twelve.
This is one ninety-six is what it shows.
Hundred ninety-six.
Yes.
Red, dwellings.
Yeah, and two hundred fifty-five parking stalls. And so when we, it's, it's a very similar, parking requirements are very similar almost everywhere. And there's always extra parking spots in apartments. There's, the only time there's not enough parking is if it's downtown and there's no actual parking requirements.
I'm just, um, I'm just trying to address Charlie's question about the density.
Yeah.
Um, so...
Yeah, it is a dense project, that's for sure.
Yeah, so, so twelve dwellings, sixteen in sixteen buildings, do you know the acreage?
Yeah, this is ten, this is ten acres.
Ten acres total?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there's quite a bit of green space on here too, 'cause there's a lot of flood.
Ten acres of buildable?
No.
No.
No, is ten acres total a lot of green space?
'Cause we have a, a fairly significant, um, drainage structure that runs through this property.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're taking all that into consideration and...
Yes.
I'm just trying to put it into perspective of the density of if this was developed into single-family homes, duplexes, R three, high-density, to address the comment from, from Charlie, so.
Yeah, this is, this is dense, this is what is affordable though, this is what we're finding that people, they need, we need this in all of our communities.
It's obviously, it's, it's a higher density than an R one or an I, R two, but it's not tenfold or...
It's also very nice, it's high, it's, it's like, it attracts a really good demographic, so.
Any other questions, concerns?
This looks like an area that would be hospitable to a neighborhood business district within it.
Sure, but that's not what he's applying for.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions? Come on up.
So... Is this, is this going to be market rate housing?
Yeah, it's market rate, it's, uh, section nine, right?
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion, motion and a second to approve the rezone?
Who is the second?
Ryan. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, there we go, step one. Actually step two, 'cause annexation. Um, item number eleven. The N B zoning district draft. Anybody have any comments on this? Patrick worked real hard writing words.
So there is a few changes from the last meeting and we'll, we'll try to walk through what those are. So the first couple of pages, that is just the, where it fits in and that kinda stuff, that has not changed. Where, where there are a couple of things added are the conditional uses. I think this is what has changed, sometimes it all blends together from meeting to meeting, so it might have been their last time, but I spoke with our development committee, committee every month. Our engineer and I try to get together with the developers in town just to talk about pretty much whatever's on their mind to talk about. And so we ran this by them and they had some thoughts about maximum building size. What we had in the last draft was five thousand square feet, up to that as permitted, then up to ten as being conditional. What we have here in front of you, just for consideration, is up to twelve permitted, then to fifteen by conditional use permit. But if you wanted to go to fifteen, you would have to be a single principal business, you could not be a, a row of businesses. So that's one thing, and we added any... So that's one thing, and we added, any outdoor sales, display, or storage in conjunction with a principal use would require a conditional use permit, so it would either be all in the building, or you'd have to get a conditional use permit if you wanted to have things extending out from that. Um, we tried to set the setbacks to what would be kind of the GB setbacks, and I added some additional development standards, fifteen-nine dash ten, just some things to think about based on the concerns of the people that are coming and spoken, parking lot lights is one, mechanical or electrical equipment needs to be somehow screened from abutting properties, loading areas should either be in a large, a yard, not a budding or adjacent of residential property, if that's not possible, then you would need to do a, some screening, and the last one is just trying to play around with exterior lighting, if you're not open, don't have your lights on kinda thing, and we'd have to hammer out what the term non-essential commercial lighting is. So those are just all up for consideration, nothing's finalized, one thing to note on the next page is, we use the similar language for church buffering that was, that P and Z wanted, I left the blank highlighted there because that has the buffer strip at being twenty-four feet in width, do you feel that is appropriate, or is that something we need to look at, is that using a lot of land for trees? Tammy, you wanted to just generally mention the concept of earth berms usually provide some drainage issues, are the use of earth berms something we want to reconsider in the future or not? I just wanted to mention that. Accessory buildings, most commercial buildings don't generally utilize an accessory building, but I just kind of fit NB in with the other uses, and that's kind of how the rest of it went, front yard, side yard, rear yard, takes the approach that you can't park on setbacks, all parking spaces have to be hard-surfaced. Then permanent signs, we talked about no freestanding signs, and with a sign on each frontage side of the building, so I tried to fit NB in with the other commercial uses. So that's where all, the rest of that comes from. One thing they did talk about at the development committee meeting was the possibility of a zero front yard setback, and have the parking behind the buildings, and the front of the building being on the sidewalk, just for your consideration. So that's, those are the changes to discuss, just, just briefly, so that's where the highlighted changes are.
Okay, anybody have any thoughts on that? Anyone?
I, uh, I personally am not happy with zero frontage. That seems more like something you'd find in a true general business area, or a downtown business area. I don't personally think it's appropriate for a neighborhood.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I agree, I think that's a central business element. I'd hate to look out my front living room window to the property adjacent to me, left or right, and see a business right up against that, right up against the sidewalk.
Okay. Anybody else up here have anything, any other concerns on this?
Sorry, sorry Tammy, I always get a lot of comments.
Love it, bring them.
So just going down the uses here, just maybe for discussion clarification, when we talk about beauty salon, Paul has AHJ, I assume that would include tanning facilities, medical spas, facials, waxing, massage, manicures, pedicures, correct?
Yes.
We have some definitions we need to, we need to modify and clarify once.
Also, in our R one, we, as a permitted use, we allow churches, libraries, and electrical substations. I guess I would recommend if they're allowed in an R one, we should allow them in a neighborhood business as well, along with the same standards, like electrical substations does have some standards associated with that.
Screening and whatnot.
Under a convenience store, I see we did not have the standards listed there regarding the portions of commercial use of the lot accessible to the general public shall occur only on the first floor, so if we could do that for all of the-
Yep, that was probably more of an oversight.
We should include that there. When we get to drug and convenience stores and restaurants, I know there was a comment, or maybe a question from the audience last time about malt liquor and alcohol, so not sure how we want to address that, but I think we need to keep that in mind, do we want to allow, do we want to restrict this so that we're not allowing bars to be within neighborhood business, or maybe we want to allow that? I, I think we should maybe address that as, as a committee.
Okay.
When we talk about grocery and delicatessen, it says, no food, food products shall be consumed on premises, but yet we allow restaurants as a permitted use, so.
Okay.
Do we want to consider striking that limitation? Um, under owner-occupied dwelling unit, it lists in words one thousand three hundred, but in numerical it lists one thousand five hundred, we just need to clarify, is it thirteen hundred or is it fifteen hundred?
Wow, you read this closely.
I actually read it, I did my homework, Tim.
That's great.
Yep, so it was thirteen hundred, and I put fifteen hundred do, and did not adjust the other one, which I should have, but it, I rose, I increased the number a little bit because of the building size increase, and that's a number we'd have to figure out what makes sense when we set on a business size.
Sure. Um, under drive-up windows, we should probably all, also address remote drive-ups, we allow banks, and a lot of banks do remote, remote tellers, not just to a, to a drive-up window, but through pneumatic tube systems. So I think if, if we're gonna include drive-up windows as a conditional use, we should also include, uh, remote drive-ups.
Okay.
Under additional development standards, number two, so fifteen-nine-ten, paragraph two about, talks about screening of mechanical electrical equipment, we should also include trash enclosures.
Yep. I originally had that in there, then I realized it was addressed later on in general standards under the landscaping standards on the second to last page.
Okay.
It was already addressed for CB and GB, so I just slipped NB in as well.
So it's added there, all right. And then the next paragraph, the off-street loading, um, so when we talk about loading areas, it talks, in our ordinance, it talks about, you know, it's not just loading docks, it's not loading doors, it's loading quote areas, and in our definition of loading areas, in fifteen, fifteen-fourteen-four, it's an actual parking space, so where a delivery truck would actually park and sit, and so is the intent to also screen the vehicle, or is the intent just to screen the door, or the loading dock, or, you know, just, just to give Paul some clarification in terms of what we're trying to enforce here, I don't know if we need to necessarily enclose the vehicle parking area, you know, because a lot of these small businesses, they, they're just pulling up to a door, you know, these little Dairy Queens and, um, two-twelves and, and tailgaters, you know, they're just, they're just unloading to a door, so do we need to screen that type of an application? I don't, I don't know.
Probably not.
Fifteen-nine-eleven, uh, we've got some districts that allow individually-platted lots surrounded by common spaces, strip malls, basically, do we want to include that into our NB district? I think it's probably gonna come at some point, strip malls with, with common parking space around them, so, I don't know, thoughts from the rest of this group?
I would allow it.
Patrick, do you wanna add that to this?
Yeah, that could play into the, we talked about somehow encouraging shared parking, maybe, so that could play into the, yeah.
Yeah, so like, I mean, we've got a couple of strip malls right now, the Fastenal location, and then out by Odie's where we got churches in strip malls, obviously churches occupy on Sundays and weekends and nights, whereas businesses occupy weekdays, weekdays, so that'd be a perfect opportunity for some potential parking savings.
Okay.
Um, when we get into the lot and yard, exceptions, uh, number three and number four, where it talks about abutting R one and R two lots containing a dwelling, my concern with that is, if the chicken comes first- I'm sorry, that was my long list.
Don't be sorry.
Does anyone have any thoughts on building sizes? The, the number that we were kind of hovering around with the development group, just because building is incredibly expensive right now, that while you may, have used to be able to get away with, you know, five thousand square feet, doesn't make sense now to build a building that size? That's why they wanted to go on more of an upper level, but I am open to your thoughts on what you think makes sense, and that will come down to what the intent of the district is.
So lot size, well, and, and setbacks will restrain most building sizes, correct?
Correct, since the building, we have either a number or fifty percent of the lot, so that, the fifty percent might cover most things as well, so, so there's, there's a cap on size, or you could have a, a huge lot, but if you're capped at twelve thousand, then you'd have a-
So right now, the maximum building footprint is fifteen thousand, and they can go three stories, the way it's written, so they could go forty-five thousand square feet, three stories, correct? The way it's written.
If, if that's how, the, I think we kept the thirty-five feet, so, yes, if it was a single user, yes.
I'm trying to envision in my head how big a fifteen thousand square foot building is, is it-
It's big, huge.
Yeah, well, I get that, but like-
It's about, it's about two average residential lots.
So for some context, I, I think this is the, the number I saw in the paper, that the medical marijuana manufacturing dispensary, the one building together, was about ten.
I think that's what I saw in the paper, so if you know that building.
Which building is that now? The, the one on Ninth Street?
The one that was-
Boutique warehouse?
Buy itself a dispensary and then, you know, everybody have, uh, eight oh one north night.
And that was how many square feet, Patrick?
I think the newspaper said it was ten.
Or that's how it was.
Not the old where-
No.
So, yeah, so typical residential lots, about a hundred foot deep, and about sixty to seventy-five foot wide, so if you take two of those, two residential lots, put them together, that would be about fifteen thousand square feet.
Patrick's gonna find you a picture of a building.
I'm working on it.
I was gonna drive past it.
But yes, fifteen thousand square feet's big.
Yeah, very big.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be for a one, one octet?
That's just one story, that's just the main floor, the main floor.
The main floor would be one, one bitch.
What was her name?
So that's not big enough for all, to be enough for a-
Okay. It's big, it's really big.
Probably bigger than a Walmart, not bigger than Walmart.
Lot bigger than Walmart, it's way bigger.
Yeah, we're not to Walmart or Lowe's size yet.
No, no, but-
But.
Fifteen thousand square foot.
So this building comes out, if you roughly use the GIS tool, comes out to be eleven thousand five hundred-ish.
This building-
Can you get a street view of that?
That's the new medical marijuana dispensary cultivation, standalone building. One night where Birch comes in.
Used to be the boutique warehouse.
That's right, these are beautiful boutiques warehouse.
Okay. Anything else?
I think that's a little bit large, but I'll leave it up to the rest of you guys.
Sounds a little bit big to me.
I'd like to see it about ten, since this, since we're allowing this to happen within residential districts, we, I mean, something that big can go in a general business.
I, I would say, I think you start getting big enough, and then that sort of defeats the whole purpose of creating a zone for gen, for this neighborhood business. The, the whole point was to try to create structures that would house small independent businesses, whatever, not Walmarts and Walgreens.
Right.
Neighborhood shops.
Correct.
Let's knock it back to ten.
Okay.
Go back to ten.
Is ten the max number, is that, or would you allow something larger than that by, is that, is that the ceiling?
We're not letting a whole lot by conditional use in this zone, anyway. So.
I think it should be the max.
Okay.
Because right now, the way it's written, anything over 12,000 requires a conditional use. So do we just cap it at 10,000 per floor? I guess for the main floor.
Yes.
I'm, I'm good with that.
If you're really big then, who just said, I agree with whoever just said, then basically you're...
You should be in the general business.
Should be zoning general business.
Correct.
Yeah. And if you're that big, then we would probably consider rezoning a general business.
In a different location.
In a different location, yeah.
Correct. Any other questions, Patrick?
How about from...
You guys have anything? Anything you want to add? Brian went through a lot of stuff because he's very smart.
Well, I want to hear it from a developer standpoint. What are you, what are you guys thinking? What are you seeing? What are, in other communities, what would you recommend? We can, we can create something and then if it doesn't work for anybody, then it's useless.
Yeah, but never gets used. It's, never gets used.
Thank you. Not a problem.
Lee Skelling, 204 Elm Circle. This was, kind of came about by addressing some of the neighborhood discussions that we've had in these past meetings where lights are shining and that kind of thing. And Tammy suggested at the development, Economic Development Committee meeting to maybe address a mutual access agreement. And you'll see here that this is surrounded by, all the parkings in the middle. Now, that's obviously looking at the, not every NB district that we're going to look at is four acres. See what I'm saying? For, this maybe is a unique piece, you know? I refer to the Weir Camp building a lot in my discussions with Patrick, trying to come up with this. Just so you can get the Weir Camp building, the lot to the west, there used to be that house there, and then it's kind of a, all of it's on Sioux Boulevard, you know, there's kind of a slin sliver. So when you're trying to develop that, which that's going to, that'll be coming before you at some point, how is that going to work? How would that work there compared to this? How would you get access? You know, we talked about driving by Weir Camp's south side of their building to get to this lot, because it's, you know, the stackability of cars on Sioux Boulevard. That makes it, you know, that's where some of the zero lot line came about as well. But this is, the dotted lines designate a, a, they're lot lines so per se. So there would be shared parking, what Patrick had talked about, previous meetings, that is shared parking addresses, we've referred to the Dolly Village quite a bit, target, that you can have 30% less parking in your lot if you were go shared. This concept allows that as shared. All the lights from the parking lot, that kind of thing would be, you know what I mean? Majority would be shielded from the neighborhood. That would be the only thing that, and you look at Weir Camp's building, his is, on Robin, is two residential lots. You know what I mean? That is, if you were to start developing Holly Boulevard as you went east of Weir Camp, his lot is two, where this is approximately six. You know what I mean? The, we'll use Tamarack as an example, I think five or six houses are affected by this. So that was kind of where some of this discussion, this is, obviously it says sketch plan, that's what it is, with cutting and pasting and...
Yep.
My parking is supposed to be straight, but some of it's diagonal, you know what I mean? That kind of thing. Just a concept of how it potentially would work, look, and address a majority of the neighbors' concerns about the, the light shining, the, the front business thing. Tammy says, since that's a three lane truck route, that a one access from it would be sufficient. So that's where this came about.
So I know we said, you guys said earlier that you weren't in favor of the, is it zero setback? Is that what we were talking about? Right behind the sidewalks? So in a situation like this, does it, does it make more sense to look at something like that? Or still maintain the setbacks?
Yeah, kind of.
Now...
Sorry, I kind of struggled with that when I, when I looked through our current ordinance, and even in central and general business, we still don't allow parking within, within the setbacks. But yeah, I did, that, this was what I was first thinking of, is if you have, you know, an NB next to an NB, you know, why not, why not allow parking right up against each other?
Yep.
So I think if we do that, would we also want to maybe consider allowing that to happen within central business as well?
Probably. Now, I... I'm not sure about allowing for zero setbacks if you start abutting an R1 district.
Yeah, I was, I was talking just business, business to business.
Yes.
Not business to R.
Okay.
Whether it's central or general or NB.
Does that make sense to anybody else? Yeah? So that readdresses the zero setback thing we talked about earlier?
So if I'm getting it right, you would allow a zero front yard setback if that front yard, if the property across from the front yard is another business district?
I would think it's more side yard.
Side yard.
Rear yard?
In this application, Redwood, Redwood would still be your front yard.
Correct.
At least for, at least for the east property.
Yep.
Yeah.
Now, past flower ones, you know, it's a little bit different, but the building is up to the setback line and the parking's all in the central.
Right. But you still have, you'd still have your front yard setback.
Whatever that is, yeah. But that's one of the issues with the larger building than that blocked, you know what I mean? The, whatever you call it, if there's a seven foot side yard, or that's 14 feet between buildings and coming and going with lights or whatever, that was just tried to this, trying to address some of them concerns. All the parking light shadowing or whatever, the overflow should be contained by the building. There was some discussion about the nine o'clock on one of them exceptions, I think about the non-essential. Does that mean that that business, in this particular case, would have to shut their, you know, their, let's call it their light that's shoring towards the parking lot? If they closed at six o'clock, would they have to shut it off, or could it, you know what I mean? It's really not affecting anybody. Does that make sense, I guess?
The goal with this language would, when we are under the impression that, you know, the front would be facing a parking lot, which would be facing the street and other houses, that it would be the commercial lights facing the residential that would be shut off, not necessarily in the parking lot.
I think the intent here, Lee, is that, you know, you'd still have enough lighting for security purposes.
Correct.
Just for general visibility.
Right. In this particular case, all the...
Like a gas station, you'd turn off your canopy lights, or a, you know, a car sales or something, you'd turn off your, your big high color lights, but you'd still have enough lighting to see it as you drive by.
Right.
Security for the...
Right, and, and whoever on the backside of it, but the main "I'm open for business" sign would be towards the parking lot, in this case. Now, that, that's where that little bit larger building came from, when you're dealing with a four acre versus two residential lots that are 15,000, you know? Here we're considerably larger.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else here have anything else for Patrick? Go ahead, Alyssa.
I have a question about the outdoor sales stuff. So it, it says here, any outdoor sales would require a conditional use permit, but could, so... A car dealership, right? They have outdoor sales, right, because all the cars are outside. Okay, but what about temporary stuff like you have a...
Sidewalk sale?
Yeah, so, yeah. You put up a tent in the spring for potting, little potting plants, or a food truck comes in, or, you know, temporary outdoor sales.
So Paul can correct me if I'm wrong, but the zoning ordinance doesn't necessarily address those temporary things, which is why we talked to, that when the guy that runs TERR 29 came in and wanted his building, kind of the exception to that was if it was a temporary building, it would need to, he wouldn't need to construct the permanent building, so the variance wasn't needed. So this would be more along the lines of you set up something permanent for those things. So if you have a restaurant and you set up an outdoor patio, potentially it would apply to that. Not necessarily just something pulls in for two hours and leaves.
That would be seasonal though, even, you know, an outdoor patio in front of a bakery to eat your cruller. But, so that wouldn't be permanent, so would you need a conditional use permit?
The structures to house it would probably be permanent. Like you would have probably some kind of decorative fencing.
Like in front of, say, scooters. There's decorative fencing up, that doesn't come down with the seasons, it's there all the time. I get it.
Whether that's something you want by conditional use permit, or we don't care, that's up to you all.
Leave it as conditional use.
Yeah, I think in these, in this type of an area, I think we want to have a little bit more control and a little bit more transparency in end.
Yeah.
If it was general business, probably not a big issue. If somebody wants to put up a greenhouse in front of Sunshine or in front of Ace Hardware, I don't think that's an issue, but if it's going in and I'm living right next door to it...
Correct.
I'm, I might want to come in and have some say in it.
Yes. I agree.
So if you put up a snow fence and sell Christmas trees for three weeks, that's okay?
Okay. Anything else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Questions? Anybody?
I, I would just like to go...
I'm sorry? Are we moving fast enough for you guys?
We're trying.
I would just like to go on record and thank Patrick for all his work on this.
What? Nice job, Patrick. He's good with the words.
We're getting closer.
We're getting closer. So we probably have a few adjustments tonight, or there's something for us next time to review again.
Yep, well, next draft will be far more long than this one, so hopefully we're, we're finding the balance.
Perfect.
So what, what kind of a timeframe, once we actually get to something where we all can give the thumbs up?
So...
What does it take from there to get through?
Prob, three months if we really, really push it. It takes a planning and zoning public hearing and a recommendation, and then it goes to city council for a first reading, public hearing. By state law, those have, the first and second readings have to be at least five days apart. The second one doesn't have to be a public hearing, but say they vote on that, then it takes, you have a referendum period where 5% of registered voters can put anything on the next ballot, and that, you have a 30-day referent, 20 or 30 days. But it's, it's a, it's a period of time, I think it's 20.
Okay. So we've got a little bit of time that for some of the developers in, in the audience here that want to break out in the spring, we don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of luck.
No.
Right?
Correct.
State law cares a lot about zoning with timelines, but if you want to change speed limits, you just pass an ordinance, second reading, time period, good. So it cares a lot about zoning.
It should. Okay. I think we're done with that one, unless anybody has anything else? Item number 12, lot definitions.
So...
Help me out with this one.
You can more or less ignore the last page. I thought about if we wanted to really get into the weeds of what yard is what, but I figure since it's already 8:15-ish, that we probably don't want to sit here and mess around with that. I just wanted to make sure the lot definitions are what we want them to be. In particular, on page 80 of the packet, if you look at the definition of required front and required rear, on required rear lots, on corner lots, on corner lots, the required your rear yard may be to the rear of either street. So staff has historically gone with the interpretation that pretty much whoever is submitting the plan kind of gets to choose. Do you have a preference on which, say, it, which, if there are multiple frontages on a corner lot, which one the rear yard is based off of? Because this staff has traditionally been approaching it as you can choose which one is your rear and which one's a side.
I don't have a preference.
Does it say that a maximum of one rear yard?
You could potentially choose them both.
Two fronts and two backs?
I think technically, and I, I think this must be the email between Alyssa, myself and you guys.
Your, your mic's off as well.
So this, this came about because of the application on Sandstone, about the two parcels going to general business with residential above. And at the last meeting, I, I misspoke, and I said, the rear yard is opposite the addressed front yard. Well, our ordinance doesn't say that. So that particular parcel, if it's rezoned, the two parcels into one, it would actually have three front yards to the north, the west and the south, but what is the east yard? Is that a side yard or is that a rear yard?
And, and staff has taken the approach basically that, on the site plan, they get to choose. So if you would like that clarified, we could certainly do that.
So do we want to enforce a minimum of at least one rear yard, or?
Yeah, because the setbacks would be different then, wouldn't it?
Right. So is it a seven foot setback, or is it a 20 foot setback?
Or if you were on a corner lot, you had two front yards, then would you have two backyards? Or is it, do we max it out at only one backyard?
You, we would choose a, they would choose a rear yard, and if they wanted the other one to be a rear, they could. If they wanted the other one to be a side, they could.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Let them choose. I mean, I think of like the triple frontage lots that exist off of Sioux and all these other, you know, they, they have three frontages, essentially. They get to choose what their rear is.
So if they have two furnages, does that mean they can minimize it to two sides?
No.
They, they have to choose, they have, one of them has to be a rear.
But if they have three furnages, they can have three fronts and one side. Correct?
Although the front and rear setback are the same, correct?
Yeah.
Except for when we do a double frontage, we give them and, we give them one at 20 and one at 25.
But if, if the property owner chooses, and then the property owner changes, does the new property owner get to pick then too what they want?
The building will already be up. At that point.
If they knock down the building, they could, I guess.
Yeah, they'd have to knock down the building, so.
So yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess in, in the, the parcel that just really arose, the parcel on Sandstone. So if they have a front to the north, a front to the west and a front to the south, do we say that parcel on the east is only a seven foot setback, the side yard, and not a, not a rear yard?
Require at least one rear, one rear yard?
Correct. The, the language is on corner lots, the required rear yard may be to the rear of either street. So conceptionally, there has to be a rear.
Yeah. And, and again, my question about a new owner, that, the setbacks would affect a extra, like your shed. You wouldn't have to tear down the building, but like your kid's playhouse or your shed, or it was a side yard, but it was a backyard, now it's a side. I want to put my shed closer to the street, but, so you get what I'm asking?
I, I need to sit down and think about it, but say someone had a, an existing building and they interpreted the lot yards to be differently. The building would still sit there, but they would potentially put their building in a non-conforming situation then if they...
We do have a few residential areas...
We, we do have a few residential areas that do have three front yards.
Yeah.
Along, South Sioux Boulevard.
Yep.
South Sioux Boulevard.
The setback is different on the side yard than it is on the backyard.
Yes, ma'am.
So if I'm a corner lot, and I say, "This is a backyard, and also this is a backyard."
You wouldn't do that.
Now I sell the house, now the new guy says, "Oh, this is a backyard, this is going to be a side yard, so I can put my accessory building in a different place now."
But if they were doing a corner lot, this, if they had two rear yards, they'd be twenty-five feet off of both of those, nobody would do that.
Okay.
I, I mean, I wouldn't.
So I guess, I guess really what it comes down to is, do, do we require a minimum of one rear yard?
Yes.
Right? That's what this comes down to.
Well, we say yes, right? We do require a rear yard, and we let the, we let the occupant dictate which one that is.
No, 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 not in a three-sided lot, we currently do not.
No, we should.
Yeah, it should be written down.
The main question from staff was, this just has one of them, you, they may, one of them has to be the rear yard, did we want to say the addressed, the, the front, the addressed front yard, the rear yard of that is the rear yard, or did we want to be that direct in choosing? And that is up to you. We can, we'll, we'll certainly do it any way you want it, we just need some direction.
All right, let's, let's- There's a choice, and, just to Brian's point about it, but a, a three-frontage lot is still a corner lot, so, language isn't as specific to it, but it still kind of applies, right, it just-
What?
Yeah, we can get into that later.
Nope, you might need to look at definitions and make sure those are solid for your peninsula lots.
Imagine our surprise when we discovered how many double frontage lots we have in the city of Brandon. Lots. And then triple frontage lots. Which are even more odd.
We don't have any islands, though, that's good.
Huh?
We don't have any islands, though.
We don't have any islands. I don't think.
Yeah, we don't.
All right, are we done with that?
Do you have the direction?
Um, I don't, as far as I can tell, we're not changing anything. But-
Chuck wants to go every way.
Okay.
With every which way but loose.
Yep, otherwise, that's, that's all I have for you.
All right, that being said, yes, sir? Yeah.
Just wanted a clar- clarification on the building size. Where did that stop and start? Was it as written, or was there some discussion?
My notes have, their suggestion was to make the maximum building ten thousand square feet as permitted, that no additional can be added. So ten is your cap.
That was the footprint, not?
Yeah.
So ten foot, yep. So ten thousand square foot on the main floor.
Okay, is there any exceptions on size of lot? You know what I mean, like a four acre lot compared to a half acre lot? And/or is that, if you don't use on the upper level, can you get any more on the main?
So, I think-
In other words, instead of three stories, you mentioned, I think, forty-five thousand square feet, or something like that?
Well, that was, that was if it was fifteen thousand.
Yep, so it would be thirty.
Fifteen and fifteen, I think where we ended up, you could go ten, ten, and ten. Now, the also, the other stipulation is the building footprint can't be more than fifty percent of the lot.
Of the buildable area.
Of the lot.
Of the whole lot?
So it's either or?
Yeah. Now, so, the minimum of those two, either, either the ten thousand or fifty percent.
So, look at my drawing again, as you can see, the, the, all the lots, all the building sizes are, looks like roughly less than half of the lot, does that make sense? Pretty close? How can we increase the square footage of the footprint for a larger develop, a larger lot, a larger piece, let's call it, than a smaller lot? Is there, is there-
Proportionally.
You, you would cut it into smaller lots.
Okay.
Pretty much, you would subdivide into probably twenty thousand square foot lots.
So, my question then, if lot, if on that, we'll use the right side, and we were to divide that, you know, I got it in a third there, if I was to draw a line down the middle, halfway down, and made that, let's call it the west half, three lots, could you have ten thousand square foot building to each lot, as long as it didn't exceed fifty percent of the lot?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Would you have trouble with parking, then?
Probably. You know, if you're talking retail, you know, what, retail, you need one for three hundred sort of feet, you know, on a typical parking spot is, you know, nine by-
Twenty.
Nine by thirty.
Because if they were-
Nine by, uh-
A twenty part.
Forty-five.
If they were separate lots, could they have shared parking?
Yeah, we, well, that's not addressing our current code, but yeah, potentially.
We've worked on that.
That, we have a whole lot of public hearings scheduled for the next, I think, meeting.
Yeah, shared parking is one of them.
Yeah, for, you know, even for a one-story building, um, that's, that's really going to max out what you can build on, on the site. You know, if you go two or three stories with, you know, retail or some type of commercial, you're not going to be that dense, because you're not going to figure parking out, even if it's office, so. Am I right, Lee?
Yes, my other question is that zero, when I asked about dividing that, let's call it the west half into three, could you, with the zero lot line, could them buildings touch?
If we had some-
Not the way it's written right now, proposed.
You're right, it, oh, oh.
Well, the, it's, it's-
But I, but we did talk about, um, doing, uh, what do we call it, the, the common building surrounded, or-
Yep.
Adjacent buildings surrounded by common space, so if the, the parking is shared by all the facilities?
Let's just imagine that line again in this concept, you know, just so I can get my, um, thing, would that allow then for seventy-five hundred square foot on lot two, and then lot three, which would be right next door to it, would be another seventy-five hundred square foot building, that were joined together by a zero lot line?
So, what you're wanting to do is, uh, zero setbacks on the side yard?
Well, that's what, was, that's what-
Like a central business.
Yep, like it was, I think in your handouts. Then that would, I guess where I'm going with that is, that would help you in a four acre lot, or a one-fourth acre lot, see what I'm saying? Because you couldn't, if you had a wider, it could be, there's more flexibility than a two lot, there's only so much square footage. If the lots were fifteen thousand square foot combined, you could not exceed seventy-five hundred.
Okay.
But if you did that, it, the, it would be, it would be two separate buildings that touch each other, and they would be two separate businesses. At least two separate businesses, wouldn't all be the same business.
So, it's, it's, it's what we currently have in our central business zoning, or like, imagine downtown Sioux Falls, every one of those buildings touches, so-
Yeah.
They have zero lot lines.
Yeah.
So, this would be basically creating a central business district inside of this neighborhood. Is that the intent that we were going for with this, was to maximize density, or was it to provide?
I think we were looking to not maximize density, and that's because it is within residential.
Right across the street is the Double D and VFW with a zero lot line.
Yep.
Okay? And if the VFW wanted to expand, and they acquired D and D, or vice versa, they would be able to do that.
Yep.
With what we're proposing, you know what I mean, what I was talking about. Otherwise, they could, they could all be one business.
It sounds to me like if we capped the size of the building at ten thousand, then if you split up the lots, and let, and build two buildings, and let them be stuck together, now you've got a fifteen thousand square foot building, which is what we didn't want, to have one business in, to me is what this sounds like, but, which is what we didn't want.
Yeah, do we, do we have, if you put three ten thousands together, do you have a thirty thousand square foot building?
Only one business in it.
On three lots, no, three businesses.
Right.
But it's a thirty thousand square foot building.
But, but, is it-
The number of businesses-
But wasn't your example just a minute ago, if, if the V, if the VFW moved away, and D and D wanted to expand?
Yes.
They could, now we have two businesses on, now we have two buildings that are stuck, that are, that touch on two different lots, with only one business in the combined buildings.
That could happen, yes.
That could happen.
Yes.
That could happen, so now we'd have fifteen thousand square feet with one business in it, which is what we were trying to avoid.
But that's a central business.
But that's what he's asking for here.
Right.
But, that's the question for perhaps the, the land that's north of the Methodist Church, or any-
So, Lee, as you have it shown right now, the property to the east, how big is that building, as you have it? I can't read the numbers here. You got three, you got a large, a medium, and a small. What size are each of those buildings?
I think there's two of them that are identical.
Yep.
You know, on the east and the west, and then that one in the northwest corners is smaller, approximately fifteen thousand square feet.
Those are fifteen feet.
Yep. Because they're, the lot is three hundred and eighty-one feet deep, and four hundred and fifty-four frontage. See, that's what I'm saying, it's such a unique parcel.
And then what's the smaller one right now?
Um, which would be right around five thousand.
And then what's, what's the lot sizes?
Um, well, take, if the lot was three, I think it's three fifty-one there, and divide that into thirds roughly, what is that? Um, three fifty-one divided by three is a hundred, would be three hundred, and adding twenty, twenty to each one, or hundred, hundred to a hun- a hundred and ten foot lot, a hundred and fifteen foot lot. The distance where you're picking up your parking in this particular case is there's a lot of parking in the middle, you know what I mean, because it's wide. Right now, the church is located in the center of their lot, per se, to the south, and they have a large backyard, and all their parking is in the front by the neighbors. We were just trying to address the neighborhood concerns with the, the lights and the parking, and kind of came up with that idea of this.
Okay. You're on.
There you go. To kind of address your point, too, if we had, like, if, if, if the total lot, if the lot size was like one point two five acres, or you, you came up, then we're not, then somebody wouldn't be able to do what you're saying, and have a three hundred or thirty thousand.
Right.
You know what I mean? So, what we were hoping there is, that we can address the building size with the two lots, and then if there's a maximum lot size, you couldn't, you couldn't put a Walmart there, you couldn't, you couldn't get enough lot space to do that. You see what I'm saying? So, there's, there's, I want you guys to have some control over that, and that's how we were giving you the control back. So if you guys said, "Okay, if you guys want to do three lots here, that's fine," but none of them can be bigger than one point two five acres, well-
Yeah.
Then I can't get a thirty thousand square foot building on there. But, if I wanted to take my one point two five acres and break it into half, right, and then put my two buildings beside each other, I could, but I still can't get a thirty thousand square foot building on one point two five acres.
But if we allow buildings up to fifteen thousand square feet, why, why not just allow that, and not make somebody replat and go through all that, just to end up with a fifteen thousand square feet building anyway?
Yeah, so maybe, I guess I would offer a suggestion, that maybe the better way to control that would be the lot size. Like a one point two five, it can't be more than that, and then you can't get that big of a buil- that size of a building on there anyway. Because I think where Lee was going with that is, with the NB, this one, but then if you use a Warecamp, for example, or you use the east side, for example, you're going to start running into different building, or, um, land sizes, so if you get out there and you have a bigger piece versus that small piece, well then, that building size doesn't make sense on the big piece, but it, so maybe putting a one point two five acre parcel piece maximum is better than a building size maximum. Suggestion? To, to address, because I want that control, yeah, no thirty thousand square foot buildings, no Walmarts, no, nothing like that, yeah, I agree.
That was addressed in some discussion at the Economic Development Committee meeting as well, in a new development, when there was new developers present. Uh, we'll use the golf course land as an example there, where there would probably be general business up front, um, along Aspen, um, and then there would be either multifamily or, or general business, then multifamily, or NB first, then multifamily, then R1, but on a, um, let's call it a one road in, so to speak, okay, because that's quite a large parcel, so you have one road in and one road out, that the parcels could potentially be deeper as well, on each side, you know what I mean? I don't know if that's a half a mile, or three quarters of a mile, or whatever that is, see what I'm saying, that there would be, so that the streets lined up with chestnut and country club, is an example, wherever that is, there's quite a large area between there. So, by making, I don't think this will just be in existing neighborhoods, I think there was some discussion that this would come about in new construction, new developments as well, because it's another tool in their toolbox.
Yes.
So, when you talk about a restaurant, that kind of thing, um, if you look at Two Twelve as an example, you know what I mean, that's, um, you know, there's, there's, there's some bigger restaurants and that kind of thing, you know what I mean? That would be my only thing about restricting it to, um, the, the whole NB everywhere is only going to be this big, because them developments are going to be probably five or ten acres of NB, you know what I mean? So, where this one's four, or something to that effect. I'm just, I don't know if I have the right answer, but I was just trying to get, you know, the, if the, if what TJ was talking about, the lot size got to be cer- so big, and that limits what happens, you know, that's another way to catch all that kind of fits to Redwood Development, Golf Course Development, or other developments that potentially could come.
Makes sense, maybe we should start talking about the, the, the size of the land of an, of an NB, not the size of the building so much, but the size of the land.
Okay. It's eight thirty, and I'm starting to see stars, so, I think I would like to just wait on that for a little longer. Thank you. Uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned at eight thirty-seven.
Thanks for your input, guys.
Yeah.